You got work to do or what?
Yeah, welcome, welcome to duck the final council meeting of this potentially moving forward. I'm pretty sure, pretty sure it's the last one. Yeah, we've accomplished, we've accomplished a lot. Despite resistance to certain things from certain people. But that's how the system is supposed to work, checks and balances, so on, so forth. Very good stuff. It was a pleasure to work with some of you. Yeah, let's get this done.
Impressive subtlety as always, Max. Thank you.
Hey, what was subtle? What did you do?
Dakota, do you have anything you would like to present at this particular council meeting?
Uh, I'd like to bring something up. I don't know. Viable this, I don't know if anyone else has noticed, there's fucking ATVs all over the streets, like every five seconds I see an ATV. Uh, I do know that we have an existing charge for off-road vehicle, misuse of an off-road vehicle. However, these have license plates. Uh, cause they are purchasable from Mosley's. Uh, is the only thing, I just want to make sure with DOJ, is the only thing that dictates if it's a misuse is if it has a license plate or not?
Oh yeah, Tessa brought up a concern about this to me. Uh, she said that she was allowed to buy a vehicle from Mosley's. Uh, that does not have a plate and cannot bury plate.
Yeah, the off-road motorcycles, I believe, like the Sanchez and stuff cannot get a plate on them.
Hers isn't, it's weird. Hers is like a middle ground. It's like an army motorcycle. So it's got like the off-road tread tires, but it all, it looks like a normal city bike.
Does it have a VIN?
Yeah.
Okay.
But I kinda said to her, it's problematic because if that's the case and it still has a VIN, well, I've ruled previously the cops need like a reason to run your VIN, right? So does that mean you just have a get out of jail free card if you're riding around a bike with no plate? Cause then cops can't run your plate to see if it's stolen or flag for anything or whatever. Or ID you if you're fleeing and then the only way they can confirm it's your bike is by matching the VIN, which again requires, you know, like a full inspection. So I
Is a Sanchez scout?
Down just like a legal train of thought, wouldn't the lack of plate be PC to investigate if it's an illegal off-road vehicle or not? To which you could then run the VIN to confirm that as far as the investigation.
Well, the problem is that we regardless of whether it's illegal or not. That was the bar was it having a plate, right? So.
So if it, if it doesn't have the plate, that's your PC to
Right, but it could be legally owned and not have a plate is what he's saying.
Yes, then what do we do with the charge? Right now it is unlawful to operate an off-road vehicle on city streets, highways, county roads and sidewalks. So off-road vehicles have to be defined, right? So they're defined as ATVs, dirt bikes, farm tractors, golf carts and dune buggies. That don't have a visible license plate displayed.
Might be splitting hairs a little bit, but uh, wouldn't Vins on uh, off-road vehicles, shall we say, be in plain view? I mean, you're not popping the hood of a motorcycle. You're just looking at it from a very specific angle and shining the light in there.
You're still missing the point. The, the whole issue here is is, is it illegal to operate one of these vehicles? Not whether the thing is stolen or whatever, but is it illegal to operate one in the city? Do we want that to be a crime?
Hasn't always been a crime.
It has.
It has been for a very long time, but again, that was under different circumstances. So I'm just revisiting the concept.
Yeah, I don't think they were, I don't think ATVs and off-road, well, I don't think ATVs at least were purchasable by citizens.
You could purchase, uh, they call them like street quads. Uh, but those are very different than, than off-road quads. The street quads are like, you ever seen one of them, uh, them DMX music videos, early 2000s? Where they're riding around like the, the quads and stuff like that. Yeah, those are, so those are street quads and those would be legal. The issue is like off-road vehicles. So actual like dirt bikes, you know, tractors, just random shit, right? And a big issue, you know, back in the day, the reason why the charge was needed was because dirt bikes were kinda just everywhere in the city. You could rent them even. Uh, but you know, they didn't have a visible plate and people would use them to like get away from the police and cause mayhem and sell drugs and all this other kinda shit. Nowadays, I don't know if that's an issue, but I also don't know if we want people driving around a bunch of vehicles that you cannot read from the license plate reader.
I'd say no is no different from having a vehicle without a license plate on. That's that's also legally so none. Funny even though we have anything there.
So, so someone like Tessa who buys a vehicle or Mosley's, but it has no capacity to put a plate on, we just tell her, you know, sucks to suck, uh, it's a crime if you drive your car. That's what makes it hard, right? Cause she came to me, like, you know, uh, I'm getting, what do I do? She was like, do I just eat a charge every time I, I use my vehicle? And I said, I'd bring it up to the council, but I genuinely didn't have a good answer for her because I don't know how to accommodate people like her. Uh, then also dissuade people who are doing it for nefarious reasons, right?
Maybe it could be
Suggestion I had was, uh, maybe you're going the same thing, can or her, uh, like maybe a registry with PD.
Exactly what I was gonna say, yeah.
So I told her like, what if you go to PD and like, you posed for like a picture with your vehicle and they record the VIN and all that. Uh, and then they put it on your profile and say, you know, Tesla Lamb owns this vehicle. And it is registered to her and she is trying to be in compliance, but the manufacturer does not issue a plate for her vehicle. As such, she is granted an exemption and you should give her leniency if you find her driving this.
They could even lose that exemption if they're found using it in crime or something.
Yeah, that'd be fair.
I think that's good. I like that.
Anybody have an issue with that? I mean, I wouldn't even put legislation. I just go talk to PD about it.
I think I have this line kinda fucked up, but whatever.
Max, you got any thoughts? Molten?
Does it have to be PD? Like why, I mean, I don't wanna say like a DMV, but is this not something that also like the, the DOJ or like a county clerk could handle?
Uh, I don't want clerks taking responsibility for issuing directives to police on how to use their discretion. Cause my, my point with the registry is that the police would be affirmatively noting this person has complied. And are basically being instructed by the DOJ to use discretion to not charge them until they use in the crime, right? And I don't want clerks making those affirmative statements to be improper. So I want police writing it down, you know?
Fair enough.
Max, any thoughts on all that?
Uh, I don't care. One, because this impedes on people's freedom to drive whatever the fuck they want, whenever the fuck they want. And I'm far about freedom, dog.
Yeah, that's fair. All right. So, uh, I guess moving forward, if a uh, vehicle is personally owned, sold by Mosley's, but is unable to have a plate. Uh, then I will counsel that person to approach PD, document the vehicle with pictures and VIN and all that. Uh, and then encourage PD to use discretion based on noting their profile that they have complied and tried to identify their vehicle.
Yeah, it's his visor. It's the shadow of his visor and his shades.
Sounds good.
With, uh, with that being said, I think then the unauthorized operation of an off-road vehicle, I mean, does that need to be checked? It specifically lists in there, uh, like ATVs, dirt bikes.
I think it should stay and anybody who wants to be legal and comply, you know?
So essentially if they don't register, they are then in violation of this and
Yeah, basically the first time they get pulled over, uh, they should be informed by the PD, hey, here's what we typically do with these. If you're personally driving it and it's legal and you're not doing crime in it. Uh, you come down, you know, I'll record the VIN, I'll take a picture of you, we'll put it on your profile, blah, blah, blah. I feel like that's a, that's fair and it encourages them to have a, you know, they get to meet an officer more than just a traffic stop.
Yeah, I like that.
Don't charge, will remain.
But you know, if some jackass is selling drugs on forum and then flees on a dirt bike, the cops should have the ability to, you know?
Absolutely.
Pull that person over.
Okay, I have another car related one real quick. Uh, if we're on that same thing. I had happy, uh, the EMS chief come talk to me about the VDM Act. Um, I will be honest, I don't know shit about cars. So this is just me passing on the information that he requested I bring up. Um, he did kind of give me a rundown on how this all works. Um, so from my understanding, the VDM Act applies if the engine is below what could be estimated to be about, you know, sixty-five percent on, uh, I don't know. Uh, the quality of it, I guess, um, there was a request that that means they have to replace the engine uh, so frequently that they just can't afford it. Uh, he was um, like I said, I don't know anything about vehicles. I'm just passing on what they said. Uh, they requested that it would be easier, uh, for them if it were something more around fifty-five percent. Um, that gives them a month in between needing to replace them rather than two weeks. But like I said, I don't, I don't know shit about vehicles. This is just me passing on what they said.
It's any part of the vehicle that is damaged to a certain degree. As for having to change your engine, uh, the engine will deteriorate the longer they drive it. Yes. So they have to change it at some point, but it doesn't change the fact that when you get to that point of they're so fucked, they can't even drive their vehicle in the first place. Like when you get to that point, you have to replace them because your, your car is gonna start shutting off. Uh, smoke is gonna come out of the, of the engine bay. Your transmission is gonna start giving out too. This, this isn't inherently unfair because around that point is when it becomes dangerous and you also have to get it fixed anyways.
Okay, um, I'm just passing on the, their request that, uh, they try to wait until around fifty-five percent is when they're comfortable with getting it like a fixed for uh, for the purposes of extending the time they're able to use it, I suppose. So, uh, yeah, just passing that on to see what y'all think.
I'm not against it. I don't really care. Like you can literally just, you can just, we can just remove engine because engine is different compared to everything else. The engine will deteriorate whereas every other part stays roughly the same.
I got you. It is only the engine they were worried about. So, um, if we could modify that, I know they would be happy. Um, does anyone else have any thoughts on this? Do, uh, I know Dakota, you work with cars, so you got, uh, so obviously you gotta drive one. Do you have any thoughts on that?
On the engine capacity?
Yes.
I mean, sixty-five is, I could talk for the PD perspective. If you're driving your car sixty-five percent, that thing is basically a shit box at that point and it's gonna be, you might as well be driving like a photo that you get off the side of the road.
It doesn't function.
Yeah.
How are they getting down to fifty-five then? Jesus Christ, maybe these ambulances are just fucking tanks.
It'll start like, I don't know if how everyone else's experience has been, but from mine, it's like your vehicle will literally start like fucking spinning out and doing weird, weird stuff.
Wait, wait, wait. They're complaining about their ambulances?
Yes. So it's in relation to, uh, they were requesting that the, um, the condition for the, uh, the condition requirement for the engine be lower to fifty-five. Uh, to essentially make it more sustainable to continue to afford repairs for them and things.
Wait. Uh, what, what is this requirement you're talking about? They can get it replaced whenever they want, right?
Yes.
I don't, I don't really know how any of it works. I'll be honest. I tried to get him to describe it, but, uh, yeah.
The TLDR max is the more you drive your vehicle, your engine is gonna deteriorate to a certain degree. Yeah.
Why are they, why are they, why are they waiting so long to replace it?
Uh, I guess to save money. Yeah.
Well, nobody said anything to me, so.
Um, they are getting there, courtesy of me, they are getting paid thirteen hundred dollars an hour each.
Okay.
Engine replacement is, uh, is eleven thousand five hundred dollars. So that's like one days of work.
Okay, honestly, yeah.
To, to replace the engine.
Fair enough. Yeah. I don't know how much any of that shit costs. So, uh, okay, um, I, I promise I would pass it on if it's something that y'all think doesn't need to be lowered though. I completely understand.
Remember, this is what I said when we talked about, you know, salaries and all that, I said it.
Yep.
I said, it doesn't matter how much you pay people. I was gonna complain, so careful.
Uh, that's it. I, I think that the thirteen hundred is deserved for them. Um, yeah, I, I, they must have like an SOP or something? That is like mandating they have to replace it a certain percentage. Is that like what's going on?
Uh, I'm not sure if it's their SOPs. Uh, that's just been how it's gone for them so far. Uh, they said that if they wait until it's around fifty-five.
Is that better on the other screens?
Every month, I think is what they said. And then it's around every two weeks if they do the sixty-five or something like that.
If it was me, I would replace that shit.
Twist.
At, uh, eighty-four percent.
Honestly, fair, if I had my own same, yeah.
If I get close, if my engine is at eighty-five, eighty, that's when I replace it.
Yeah, okay, okay.
That's where it becomes noticeably like not as cool and fast.
Yeah, we can, uh, we can table this. I'll bring the information to them and then, uh, myself or whoever, uh, that's on the seat, uh, can pass that on next time if they're, if they still have more to add. Thank you.
Um, Dakota, were you done presenting?
Yeah, literally all I had was the off-road vehicles for today.
Okay, Molten.
Following up from last week, we, uh, we discussed basically, uh, mandatory minimums within the, uh, the legal field. Essentially I'm, I'm passing the buck on that one. I, I think it's a good, uh, election issue to run on for, for the current head of bars. Um, some people like it, some people don't. So we'll, we'll just see what, uh, the internal DOJ vote decides and the, uh, the next council can take that up if needed.
Has your opinion on that remained the same?
My opinion on that is that if, if this were like in a vacuum, like if, if we're just talking about mandatory minimums, uh, yeah, you know, maybe the lawyers, uh, do need something to, to not fuck themselves over, but in our, uh, let's call it our city ecosystem. I, I think people should reap what, what they sow. I, I don't like the idea of, of babying them outside of the, uh, the hourly rate, shall we say, uh, you know, free, free market and all that. Um, you know, on a personal level, I, I, I think mandatory minimums would be good, but as like a governmental policy, I, uh, I'm not a fan of it. But, uh, we'll, we'll, we'll see what the, uh, the DOJ voters decide in the coming week on that one. Uh, as far as things to present, this is a, I guess, just like a general issue that, uh, kind of spun up a, a little bit with like the, uh, the Archie Archer and the civilian oversight board, but could apply to other elected positions as well. You know, mayor office, healthcare liaison, uh, or head of bar, PD liaison, um, I don't think it's specifically written anywhere, but currently my, my understanding is it's essentially, uh, an unwritten policy that high command is, is not applying for these council positions. Uh, you know, this is intended to be of, of, oh yeah, part of the, the voting block of, of that entirety. And the, the general question I, I would like to propose to you all is, uh, can a let's say command member, can, can they speak for the, the people of that faction or do they more, more toe the company line? Uh, for the DOJ perspective, I'm specifically talking about judges. I, I'm not saying that judges shouldn't be able to, uh, run, run for the seat far, far from it, but, uh, Crane, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But if, if we're having judges, uh, just not take judicial cases, uh, my, my general opinion is that, uh, if a judge gets this position, you know, they should be running for this position, not for another hat. You know, as was kind of lightly discussed next week. And they should go down to the, the base level in their respective department, uh, you know, senior officer for
Uh, yeah. So any judge that were, and I wrote this in the signup, any judge that is to run for uh, head of bar would be abandoning their judicial duties.
So I, I, I'm saying that in, in this case, specifically for the DOJ, but maybe a conversation for the others is I don't see a point in having a judge, uh, without judicial duties. I think that if, uh, in, in the case of
No, they're not remaining a judge.
Yeah. Okay. So, okay. So they're, 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 they're completely getting out of like the judge role. They're basically
Much like, much like Siobhan, uh, is no longer a lawyer. They, they are no longer judges if they become the head of the bar.
LOA.
I, I am not saying it is a leave of absence. I'm saying if they want this job, they have to resign as a judge, become a lawyer. Maybe they could, can become a judge. Yeah, they, they come back, but they, they are not, uh, it is not expected that, that they could come back in this case as a judge, if they get this position. If, if they really want this head of bar position, they have to show that they want it by essentially becoming a base rank and speaking for the entirety of the department, in this case as a lawyer. If Crane, as the, the chief justice wishes to give that person a judge position back at the end of their tenure, that, that is within his purview, but it, it's not an LOA. It's not like a, hey, I'm not taking on judicial duties and I'm getting them back after ninety days. It's I'm no longer a judge and maybe I get it back when my tenure is over. Maybe I don't. Uh, I, I don't know if that could apply in any sort of way to like sergeants plus or whatever the, the equivalent is of the healthcare liaison. I, uh, I don't, uh, you know, that, that would be a discussion, I guess, to be had. But as far as DOJ, I, I think people should go to baseline lawyer. And then as far as the civilian oversight stuff.
Don't do anything.
I think that, uh, it, they shouldn't be restricted from running, but because the election cycle is off kilter. Um, if they win, they
Think is his take.
You know, essentially, uh, drop from the civilian oversight board and because the election cycle
Or anything like that.
Synced up. They, they don't get that position back, you know, and then, then they basically can't run for it again until next time's appropriate. Uh, I guess, does anyone have any thoughts about like the DOJ stuff or the, the, the command plus roles?
I got a thought.
Mm-hmm.
Who are you voting for, for head of bar?
Uh, I have, I have no idea. Well, okay. So who, who's running? I, I saw Roman Atlas, Moose
Roman Atlas, Moose Knuckles.
Murphy Brown.
Cross, Murphy Brown and Cornwood.
Oh, yeah.
Uh, I, I honestly have no idea. I, I have the best personal relationship with Serge, but I, I do not know any of their platform. If I, it, it'd probably be Serge.
God, Roman on council would be so fucking
I've heard numerous people say they'd vote for him now though. So even if he's not trying, he might get him.
Bro, I've not even seen this guy more than one time in four months.
He's an extreme opposite hours than you.
Yeah, yeah.
So the time when you're around super late in the night, he's probably just waking up. Uh, and then he's probably gone by the time you're around again. Uh, that being said, he did inform us recently that he has, uh, renegotiated his contract uh, with his employer in Liberty City. So, uh, he will be around during NA more.
Cool.
Which I assume is why he's running.
Uh, cool. See, I, I'm just wondering what brought this on, Molten?
What, what brought it on in general was, uh, the, the civilian oversight, uh, board stuff, you know, the, the too many hats, like the, the wanting
That dickhead called me by the way.
Who?
And I'm gonna put this on camera. That dickhead Archie Archer called me.
By what?
Uh, he was upset that apparently, uh, we said that he was power hungry at the last meeting. And assured me, uh, that it is not the case. And he is in fact, uh, a, you know, kind and innocent doe, just merely traipsing through the field sniffing flower.
He tried, Crane, you know, he tried to traffic stop a cop after I got COB.
I have heard about that. I brought it up to him. His response was, uh, uh, no, that didn't happen.
Okay. Well, he's a lying piece of shit. That's okay. Hey, uh, I'm sorry he called you, man. Cause I know how that feels.
Yeah, I normally I'd respond with one word answers and walk further and further away until he detaches from my orbit, but uh, it doesn't work on the phone. Go figure.
I know that he, uh, he's called at least me and Etta as well. Um, so I think he was making the rounds. Um, I, I did apologize for, uh, the, the harsh language, but, uh, well, here we are and we still all stand by the same opinion it seems. So there you go.
Sometimes harsh language is good.
Oh yeah. I'm never gonna not say what I think in these meetings, even if they're recorded.
Anyway, so that dickhead Archie Archer, uh, uh, what are we doing with him now that he's running for mayor?
Uh, so he, he, he called me and essentially um, begged me to not push him being removed from, uh, the COB uh, before he is elected mayor in, in theory, in the universe in which that happens. I don't know, Bizarro universe. Um, and, and at first I was like, well, uh, for the sake of the civilian oversight board, it would be good to get the ball rolling on replacing him before that time so that it can be functional. Because it had only just recently become functional, right? Uh, but I talked to him on the phone. He basically begged me to not remove him. So I was like, okay, fine. Whatever. I, I won't push that.
Yeah, I don't, yeah. He, I, I don't know. He, the guy on the phone me seemed shit except, uh, he kinda slipped a little bit. He, in the midst of assuring me that he wasn't power hungry.
This is a mess of topics.
Something loosely to the effect of, uh, you know, I don't want you to think that the civilian oversight board isn't enough for me. I always wanted this position. It's what said I was wanted. Just because I misunderstood exactly what it did or what authority it had, uh, doesn't mean I, I like it any less. And I said, okay, but didn't you, he said, you know, I always wanted to take my time and do this first. And I said, well, didn't you run for mayor as soon as you were able? Like the second the signup went up, you just signed up for mayor. So what do you mean take your time? Why don't you wait till next election then? Why don't, why don't you do civilian oversight board for a full term? And then run for mayor. Uh, I need to have a good answer for that. So I don't believe that asshole any bit.
Yeah, regardless Max, that, that's how it came up is, uh, you know, we, we discussed, uh, wearing hats and, you know, power, ma- making sure that this is the role of what you want. So I, as, as opposed to having it just be about the civilian oversight board. That's why I wanted to have a generalized conversation, you know? If you really want to sit on the council, you know, uh, does being a sergeant in the PD conflict with that? Does being a, a judge conflict with that? Does being a, apologies, Cantor, I, I don't know.
Okay, I'm in attending.
Hospital.
Yeah.
And I don't know where that falls either.
In my opinion, in my opinion, uh,
Are you hospital high command, Cantor?
Command, not high command.
In my opinion, and I expressed this during the initial election cycle, cause I was asked and I had not considered it. Uh, I was asked by someone, um, I think I mentioned this by, um, Michael's brother, Nick about running. Uh, and I said specifically, I do not want high command. Uh, you know, or de facto leaders of departments or factions, or you wanna call them, uh, on the council. Because I believe that, you know, my position here is a necessity. You know, born out of, you know, the creation of the council, right? But in terms of, uh, the majority or even vast majority compo- composition, it's intended to be people who can bring forth ideas that are not already the standard policy of their department.
And, and that, that's why I'm saying, does, does command fall under standard policy of, of that?
No, because they, while they may enforce it and they may give input prior to it being enacted. At least from my position, the DOJ, uh, they do not, you know, unilaterally set policy.
I can agree with that.
Everything is a mutual discussion and collaborative effort. But at the end of the day, there is a decision-making authority, which is the only way to maintain any kind of productivity. And that is in our department, the faction head, chief justice. In other departments, that would be, you know, your high command. Uh, so I do not, uh, want high command on the council because I think it is, uh, redundant. For them to just issue the same POV.
Absolutely. If I were ever to be given a board seat, I, I would not try for this. That, that just, uh, that just doesn't make sense to me. Um, and I would probably take that over the council to be frank, cause that's a for everything, but, uh, it's not something that I'm looking for right now and I'm very happy with my position. So.
I think that in any faction, I think command, as Cantor's pointed out, can be effective. Uh, because I believe that while command are entrusted with carrying out the policies of their high command on a day-to-day basis, uh, they are also capable of having their own opinions, right? Whereas if you're in a high command position, uh, your own opinion is the policy opinion. So, yeah.
I like that.
Are there, are there any specific issues anyone has with certain factions command over another, or I know Molten mentioned the judges as a concern.
Yeah, I mean, that, that honestly, Crane, that's, uh, I, yeah, that, that's my only concern is what, what's the point of having a judge that, that gets rid of judges unless they're still doing administrative duties is what you're saying? Like, are, are they still like giving?
In the head of bar, I would expect judges, uh, to be using the position to set an example in the lawyer role. So if a judge were to become the head of bar, I would expect them to operate as a lawyer for the time that they are the head of bar. I would not expect them to operate as a judge. But I think the DOJ uni- is unique in that sense.
That makes sense. Yeah.
We're not gonna tell the, you know, liaison from the PD to, you know, only do desk work, right?
Alright. Fair enough.
Uh, Michael, any thoughts? I know, you know, I mentioned your brother a couple of times here, but did you have anything from your POV on the whole command idea?
Uh, no, not really. I was just
Uh, no, not really. I was just, my, my, my thing was just like you mentioned that high command shouldn't be in those positions, but it's more to, to grasp the, what your intentions were and it makes sense.
All right.
Don't have anything. No, you're good.
Uh, yeah, that's, that's, that's my take on it, Malden. Uh, I, I wrestled with the idea back and forth of like, should sergeants be able to run for PD? Should judges be able to run for head of bar and all that kind of stuff? Um, and that's kinda where I landed. And I think if it was like a captain, I'd have a problem with it, right?
Yeah, captain's high command PD. All right. Well, yeah. If, uh, you know, if people don't think, uh, command serving on this, uh, council is a problem for the future, then, uh, then, then so be it. The, uh, the only thing I would recommend, once again, just from a DOJ policy is, uh, I, I think it would, uh, judge intentions more purely. If it's not just a suspension of due judicial rules, it's a, you're resigning from judge.
Murphy or Cornwood's gonna win this one.
And at the end of your tenure, maybe you get it back. Maybe you don't. That's a decision that's gonna be had in 90 days or whatever.
That's, uh, fine with me.
All right.
I think that's good policy. I think it, uh, encourages them, uh, in a more stern, forceful manner to go interact with the lawyers as a whole.
Who's to say?
That wasn't other than that. I, uh, I'm good. Nothing else from me.
Okay. Uh, and by the way, I'm, I'm not even gonna put legislation. I'm just gonna make that DOJ policy. Uh, so I will talk to the judges. Yeah. Okay. I, when, when, when the votes are about to be released, I will talk to the winner ahead of time and say, hey, just so you're aware, you know, blah, 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 blah. All right. Uh, did we, whoa. Sorry. I, I came from, I was at a jacuzzi party last night and my head's all funky. What are we, uh, what are we doing? Do we have other items on the agenda?
Uh, yes, I have a few things if Malden's done.
I'm done.
Hell yeah. Okay. Perfect. Um, I have, uh, I already brought up the, the one that EMS brought to me. I have two different reports. If y'all wanna take a look at them. Um, I actually wrote up the, uh, law against, uh, violent acts in government property. Super simple. Just to give y'all an idea of what I actually wanted it to be, if you wanna take a look at that.
But this just be, uh, an enhancement basically, or?
Uh, yes. So it would just be added on if the violent acts, uh, violent felonious acts are committed on government premises. Uh, this is what I was thinking Tom Farn was. Uh, I am not trying to make medical discontinuity or medical terrorism. Just a dissuasion, um, to give people information. Uh, recently we've had a significant issue of violent, uh, uh, violent acts occurring in the hospital to the point where Slacks the other day asked me if he needed to have metal detectors, uh, installed, uh, which I think is overkill, but some sort of a dissuasion would be nice. Um, Ed isn't here to vouch for this, but the other day me and her were treating patients. When, uh, BBMC started attacking the clowns while the cops were there and started shooting them. Uh, and BBMC won that, took down all the cops, all the clowns. Some of the BBMC were down. The ER was littered with bodies. And we just had to stop treating patients, uh, and stand there awkwardly, uh, as BBMC yelled, do anything and we'll fuck you up too. Uh, and just drag their boys out. Uh, so, I mean, we were fine at least, like, but it's, it's an example of we weren't being targeted. It's not an ego act or anything.
You guys have gun licenses?
But it should, uh, I do. Yes. But I was actively treating a patient. Uh, so it was a, it was a little awkward. Uh, yeah.
I mean, if people started hitting each other in the hospital, I'd just shoot them.
I almost shot Rod Long for that. Um, but I just held him up until Pop showed up.
You know, and there's people having fights in the hospital. I'd defend yourself and the other people around you.
Oh yeah. I definitely have it available, but, uh, our official ruling from Derek Shaw is that we're not, uh, allowed to have weapons on duty. Um, so I personally often have mine available, um, because I'm doing paperwork and other things.
You know what I would say to that?
Yes.
I'd say, well, the day that you see me with my weapon on duty, Mr. Shaw, put it away.
God bless Ukraine. Uh, you know what? I like that. I mean, hey, I've got it right now for, uh, for good reason. Just in case Rod Long comes in again. But the, the, the issue isn't so much, uh, just us. It's, it's just the entirety of it. It's been an issue for EMS as well. Um, we've had, uh, apparently the other day, I believe, I believe it was Rita McGregor held up and robbed some of the doctors. Um, there's just a, people have no shame about fucking around in the hospital. And like I said, I'm not trying to get fucking metal detectors. I'm not trying to do something crazy like that. Um, but just some sort of a dissuasion essentially.
Rod doesn't go to the hospital unless, unless he has to. And also, it's also falls on your doctor for egging him on. So just both of them. I don't feel like why you bring up his name.
I understand your opinion, but that is your son and you're heavily biased there, Michael.
I don't know. It could have been anyone else. If, if you have a doctor that is egging somebody on and then.
Michael, you have only spoken to Rod, so I do not respect your opinion.
Uh, that is not true, but we'll leave it at that.
Have you spoken to Montez?
Uh, only briefly.
Wait, this shit's still going on? I thought we handled that last time.
Apparently Michael wants to cry about it more.
Oh, whoa. Okay.
Uh, you're the one bringing up his name, Cantor, not me. I was already past it.
I have to keep my weapon because I've been actively threatened. Crane asked if I have it and so there's my ask.
Rod's name and you know, he's my son.
Because he's the person who's actively threatening me. Yes.
No, you're, you're not making this rule because of Rod. You're making it because of the clowns.
I'm not making it because of Rod. I offered an example. Crane just asked me if I had my gun and I explained why.
Well, there you go. You would have used every other name. So you know better yourself.
The only active threat to me is Rod.
Ooh, doubtful, but.
Yes. No one else has attacked me, uh, in the hospital.
All right.
Or threatened to.
As far as the, uh, the, the law itself, um, I mean, would, would it, would it, I mean, it applies to all government property, obviously, but I, I, I'm just coming down on the side of like, if, if we're doing this specifically to target stuff at the hospital, what, isn't this pushing in this towards medical discontinu- is that not a, was that not something that carried over?
So it's not, it's not dissonant. No, it didn't carry over.
But medical discontinuity also didn't qualify at the hospital, if I can remember correctly. It was specifically designed for out in the field.
My thoughts about medical discontinuity, um, and things like it, right, is it was such a heavy charge. People are going away for fucking, I guess nowadays, um, and, and that, that, you know, it had to be a very specific situation for it to be pushed for that reason. I, I'm not looking for something that punishing. I'm not looking for something that, um, that creates that kind of an issue. Just a slight deterrent. That, that's all it is.
Has it been happening? Like, is, is there been multiple issues of, uh?
Yes, constantly.
Bullshit, let's just say.
All the time. It, it is almost daily. Like I said, Slacks, uh, has been asking if we need metal detectors installed.
There's crazy shit every day going on at the hospital where people just do not care that people are being actively treated for serious injury.
You guys try stationing like a cop there?
Uh.
That's a tough one.
I mean, we go there definitely. We get there as fast as humanly possible.
Yeah.
Uh, if we want someone to just patrol in the, in the cell side, that's fine. Do you mean like actually stationed in the hospital itself?
Yeah, you know, just.
Uh, that is definitely something we could.
I wouldn't be against it if, uh, y'all have someone free.
Patrol in the hospital. We can definitely, uh, we can definitely look into that for sure. I'd be happy to do that.
Yeah. You know, doing your job.
I mean, I'm, I'm fine with an enhancement if, uh, I mean, if, if everyone else is, if, if we think that that's gonna be a deterrent. Although I, I think a better deterrent is, yeah, like active security, whether that be police or, uh, I don't know, empower doctors to have a gun on the, I, I, I don't know what, what the actual solution would be, but, uh, yeah.
Bro, they don't, they don't take the Hippocratic oath, man. Give them guns.
Hell yeah, we don't. I'm into that.
Yeah, I was gonna pivot that into a different, uh, you know, sim- similar topic maybe like, uh, I know there, there is the Derek Shaw policy, but, uh, I, I, I mean, could we as the council say like, well, if you have a gun license, that is essentially your, your right to bear arms anywhere but the place that are behind metal detectors or the courtroom or something like that, like, or, or can't, can't, I guess, Cantor, uh, is there a realm in which doctors could double as, as like security to defend themselves? Or do you think that Derek's policy is there for a good reason?
Internal policy wise, no, Derek will not, uh, watch on that. Uh, Derek has his false opinions. He'll stand by them, but Crane makes a valid point on that.
I, I mean, we, we could pass a law to make it so doctors couldn't get fired for expressing their, their right to bear arms.
Do we, do we want to pass our right to bear arms?
That's what I'm asking. Yeah.
That would be crazy.
Malden thinks Derek Shaw cares about the law.
No, he doesn't. No.
Sue him.
I, I don't know if I could. Someone has proposed suing him before, but it is hard to sue someone you do not say.
So fucking true, dude. He's like the Jaeger of the hospital.
Uh, Crane has like the, the DOJ and, you know, the, the judges. I mean, what, what are your thoughts on enhancer for deterrence?
Yeah, what's your opinion?
Uh, truthfully, I don't think anyone that would actually do shit in the hospital anyway is deterred by this.
You think so?
Don't think the clowns care. Don't think, uh, the, you know, BBMC give a shit. Uh, definitely don't think, you know, serial killers will give a shit. Don't think Azvaldo will give a shit. Don't think James Randall will give a shit. Uh, who else would douche in the hospital? Uh, I don't think insert group robbing the biggest, insert valuable thing in the city here, uh, rescuing their friend would give a shit.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so I don't know. Um, traditionally, the only way to curb behavior that is thoroughly unwanted is to make it so unappealing as to be ridiculous. Hence things like, uh, discontinuity, uh, the whole, you know, initial sentencing for stealing a police officer's firearm some months ago. Uh, so I, while I am in general, uh, support of you and the hospital and whatever you would like to do, uh, my personal educated opinion on the deterrent effect of that law is, uh, none.
Okay. I can see that. I'd hope, uh, we talked about punishing people for living in debt and stuff, but you know, it's just another thing that would push them into it.
I, you know, soon TM.
Oh yeah. No, I'm not. I'm not assuming it now, but, uh, you know, it at least could have repercussions down the line, right? Especially, you know, um, you know, it just, uh, just, you know, puts them away a little bit longer. So they can cool down and not bring shit to the hospital again. Um, you know, is a find a deterrent, the fact that, you know, they, they shouldn't just be working themselves into debt to do dumb shit at the hospital. Uh, I, I think there, there are chances that it could deter people. I, I see your point. If someone is like, you know, um, in, in an active situation, they could ignore it anyway. They could weigh the options, but isn't there any charge, you know? People do shit anyway despite charges. So, um, I'd still be happy to push for a vote on that. Also, I put a little note, uh, about does brandishing fine need to be so high? Cause it is like, it's like one and a half times, uh, attempt to murder of a government employee. I don't know when we did that, but that's very high.
That's just because, uh, tender murder employee, uh, could be done by anyone with any kind of weapon. And we're specifically targeting firearms crimes recently.
Mm-hmm. Okay. Okay.
So you, uh, would you like to bring us to a vote, Cantor?
Yes, I would.
Okay. Uh, we'll start with Dakota.
Uh, yay.
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 Oh, it's my turn.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yeah, I, I don't think it, uh, will do anything, but hell, I do lots of shit that don't matter. Uh, so yeah, sure. Why not?
All right.
Sure.
Funny enough, I actually got Rod's opinion on this law. He, he didn't hate it. He thought it wouldn't dissuade people too. So he'll probably still attack Montez. Don't worry, Michael.
Uh, oh, oh, sorry for me.
Um, uh, going with Alan's line of, uh, thought about, uh, this probably being too mild to actually deter anyone. Uh, I would have liked to have seen this be probably more severe, especially if it's such a large problem.
Um, what are you thinking?
It like, like Alan said, it would have to be extremely egregious in order to actually strike fear into somebody.
Yeah, we've just done that so many times and it, it gets, hmm. Uh, I don't, I don't know if it has the, uh, has the effect that we want. Uh, it just drives people away from, uh, anything, uh, at the hospital, which isn't, just an ideal either.
In my opinion, uh.
What, what, what if, uh, what if it's a, uh, let's not worry about the fine. Uh, what if it, doing a crime in the hospital was just more time in Dogtown? Bobby and Carmine.
Oh, you just add on an enhancement?
Just even more, more time.
You know what? Actually, you really wanna hurt people. Don't add time. Uh, make a legislative, oh, now I'm cooking.
Oh, yeah. What you got?
People are gonna hate me. People are gonna hate me. Uh, so what you do, if you really wanna fuck people over, like get them good, uh, you don't add any time, uh, you make it a legislative act that police cannot reduce their time.
Ooh.
So that way, if someone like robs a bank, you know, shoots three cops, whatever, and then like, you know, breaks their friend out of the hospital, well, that entire sentence, they're not getting any leniency on the time, right? Same thing like if Kirk and the clowns run from the cops and kidnap three people and do this, that, and this. And then run into the hospital and, you know, end up, you know, shooting a doctor or something or taking their friend or whatever. Yeah. Just make it a legislative act that if a person commits a crime in the hospital, uh, their sentence from the entire incident, uh, related to them committing that crime in the hospital, uh, cannot be, uh, reduced for time served by PD.
So.
Or discretion.
I have a, I, that makes me worry a little bit for lawyers like to do cell reps. One, two, um, it's even worse because the LSPD really doesn't catch people all that often.
Yeah, that's a tough one. I have people complaining to me about how no one's been arrested. We're working Dogtown. Yeah. They're like, we got nothing to do up there.
We, we got a, we got a fat, uh, let's see here, you know, Donald Bush 27, whatever, you know, rip. Uh, it's such large gaps of time where people aren't getting arrested. Um, it would fuck lawyers, I guess. Lawyers that like to do service. Uh, that said, uh, I'm not opposed to that. I'm really not.
I, I'm opposed to a, a no time off for a variety of policy reasons, let's say, but in a, a similar vein, uh, I mean, the modifier could just be, you know, times two. So like, yeah, they, they still get time off for like the cell rep for interrogations, for whatever. But the, the time, if they do something at the hospital is just doubled by default. So if you have 45 months worth of charges that you, you've done at the hospital, it, it becomes 90 months worth of charges and then it's still standard time off per PD policy for, uh, wha- whatever it is that they're doing.
Do we want to modify it and cook on these? Or do we, uh, do we wanna leave it as is and see how it goes?
I mean, the vote, the vote already pretty much passed, right? So, uh.
Yeah, I'll, I'll, oh, yeah.
It's, well, it's up, it's up to Cantor. I, I agree with Max. It's up to you. If you just wanna put it in and let it ride and see what happens and fuck, we'll do that. Uh, if you wanna cook up something that, you know, is pre-approved, uh, before the next meeting, that's cool too.
I was gonna say yes, because.
Well, I guess we'd have to do it today, cause there is no next meeting.
Yeah, we'd have to do it today. Okay. Uh, Malden doesn't love the lack of production of time. Uh, do we?
Very much opposed to that on multiple.
I can agree to that.
Highly enough much I'm opposed to that.
It's understandable. Uh, do we want to, we could increase the, the time if we think we want to force people up a dog town longer, if we wanna do it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
No, no opinion on the time and fine, but I, I, yay for the law.
My landing on the time of fun was that this would stack with whatever other charges they've done, right? Uh, it's like we've just discussed before, uh, this isn't just they're going away for 30, uh, minutes and, uh, 3K. It's that plus whatever they did. So keeping that in mind.
Assault battery though.
Uh, it, it's felony charges. So, uh, it would have to be assault the deadly.
Assault battery won't apply for this enhancement.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Assault of the deadly. Excuse me.
No, you're good. Yeah. See, if it's just assault of the deadly, then I mean.
It's still not that much.
Technically committed the, the lowest of, of charges, I guess, but it, it isn't that much. You're not wrong. We could increase that if, uh, if y'all want. Anyone have thoughts on what it's named?
Uh, if anything, I, more time.
I would triple it, honestly, what you have.
Triple it? Uh, have, that, that's a lot. Maybe, maybe 60, double it.
Uh, that's fair. Can I, can I ask you a question?
Yeah. What do you think?
Uh, are, are outside of, and I'm not trying to bring up the whole thing, Montez guy, whatever rod thing. Uh, but outside of that scenario, uh, are, are, are the disturbances in the hospital a concern because doctors, uh, are being injured or threatened or put in peril? Or is it because it's just the general nuisance of it?
Uh, it's, it's very often not doctors specifically. Um, it is, uh, the, the issue is the general nuisance. Uh it's, it's very often not doctors specifically. Um it is, uh the, the issue is the general nuisance, uh that's one thing, but it's general nuisance that shuts down the whole hospital and causes people to not be able to get medical treatment. Um, it's kind of the issue we're running into.
Alright.
Uh, you know, if, if a cop is what's need to shut that down, uh have you all considered like private security or is that, would that still conflict with internal policy?
We actually have talked with uh private security before. We just uh, we, we can't afford to have them twenty four seven. We've uh called in, um, we've called in private security for firing people and have them escorted out before. That's a great one, hard recommend, but uh we have not uh just been able to have them like twenty four seven or anything.
Well, I guess uh, I, so Gen one, are, are you, are you, Cantor, are you recommending uh sixty zero for time and fine or you, you want sixty three thousand? Like what, what's your, what's your final recommendation for what's going on at the hospital for this time?
Uh, I want a fine because I know there's some, here's the thing for me. I know some people aren't gonna shit about, give a shit about time and some people are gonna give a shit about fine. Um, the messaging I've heard when asking around um was uh, there are some people that have so much money, three K is nothing. But there are some people where three K will ruin them. Um so you know, it, it's a, it's to me a decent middle ground. We kind of want a balance of both.
So why, why don't we just leave, leave it how it is?
Okay.
We voted the damn thing in. Sounds like you like how it is.
I am personally happy with the idea of thirty three thousand. Um, unless, like, some people want it up. Uh do y'all, do y'all prefer sixty or upping it in some way?
I think we just send it how you did it and we see what happens.
Fuck yeah, works for me.
If it doesn't change anything, then we discuss whether raising things will change anything or, you know, if the experiment failed.
I feel like that's a decent amount of extra time. Um, maybe I'm too nice though. I also don't go to prison, so that, that would also help then. Okay, fuck it, we'll go with that for now.
Nice. Uh can we take a fiber? Actually, I could just, yeah, let's take a fiber.
Oh, now they're taking the fi- fucking Christ, man.
Hey, Philip, up for my records, what's the name of that act, that legislation? Yeah.
Uh it is uh FAFO, Federal Authority Felony Offenses.
Joel do that appeal, by the way, for uh i- is this government property or not? Did that ever like?
We did. We found him uh found guilty still, we didn't uh, didn't go through the appeal.
Is that what that list is like born from or is this something different? Okay.
Cause the, the essential, the argument that was made by his lawyer was that um there was no way for him to find out it was a government building. Um, so where we landed was if we create a list that people can reference, well, then they could have referenced it, so now they should have known.
Hold on, let me. This is Dakota forced to stand in corner at sale meeting.
Uh, justice, sorry about that real quick, just a quick.
Yeah.
I don't know if you uh, actually, probably not. Uh the misuse of a uh commercial vehicle charge.
Yeah.
I know there were members of command who just wanted it reiterated. I was pretty sure I had the correct answer, but that is an enhancement charge as in uh
Yes.
Slapping that on in addition to.
Speeding or whatever else, yes.
Okay, okay. Uh that was also, I don't know if you saw, but uh we hammered that pretty hard this week, so.
Nice.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate it.
Cool.
Hmm. Who's horny come to apartment B four oh four?
I still stand by, we should have outlawed horny posting. Please. Uh, this, this should be uh like a docket posting for uh life in prison.
Wait, who said that?
Chanel Money.
I don't know who that is.
Me neither.
I never want to know.
Dakota.
Yeah, I saw.
I'm glad you're back out of the corner.
It's just a good deterrent, so people know, you know, you're thinking really deep.
Oh, I just figured I'd uh, you know, make it a meme.
I appreciate it.
Yeah. Who's a bad boy?
Does sound like robbery. I know I said I'd do it uh last week, but I'm doing it now. Uh what exactly do you want the clerks to note down for the civilian oversight board?
I mean, it, it could literally just be.
Phone number, name and complaint.
Oh yeah, what do you need? What did you need access to, Molten?
Uh head of bar needs access to um city, is count, or county clerk docs? What was that category called?
Documents, clerk documents.
Clerk, it needs access to clerk documents, cause that's how they'll field like the complaints and make sure they have validity, blah, blah, blah. If you just grant that cat report category to a head of bar, then that should uh.
Wait, do you have access as head of bar to DOJ docs?
I do, but the, but if the clerks are taking the.
No, no, I'm just asking, cause I don't see it on the, the rank.
Maybe that's good. Well, that's probably because I have the lawyer tag too then?
I don't know, hold on.
I have Department of Justice, no, I just have, yeah, Department of Justice, Council and Head of Bar. I probably got through one of those, but I, I can see DOJ docs. Oh, well, now I can't, so I think you just did something to take away the DOJ.
I'm changing some stuff, hold on.
Alright, you're making it cleaner.
Hmm. So, is it possible to like make just like a separate role for me? That means like all the clerks don't see all the city uh council documents and stuff?
Yeah, I can.
Okay, that'd be cool. Then we can just remove that from regular clerks. Clean things up a bit. Cause right now my MDT is a fucking mess, holy.
Alright, it's uh, it should be fixed now, Molten.
Yes, it is. Although I could now see uh ED announcements. Question mark, I'm sure if you want that intended or not. I see there, they have a lot of announcement, they, they have more announcements than they ever should, but I, I can see them. Dakota, you had one of your own go off the deep end the other day, I see.
Yeah, half the fucking PDs in our ICU.
Yeah, I didn't hear about it until I woke up today, cause it happened like late last night into the morning, so.
It's the first PD meeting I went to, cause I had to hear what the fuck happened, yeah.
I was in the ICU the other day too, but I guess it didn't garner an announcement.
Oh, I'm sorry. Well, uh you weren't shot by a cop, so I guess uh, I guess not. Uh luckily, I think, I think Slacks is doing okay. Um I'm not sure the current condition of everyone else, but yeah.
Damn, cop on cop crimes is crazy.
It is. Uh I don't know the full context. How much have you heard, Dakota? What you feel then?
Uh yeah, I still talked to a bunch of other people, so.
Yeah, all, all I know is fucking Lenny wanted to quit, uh I guess did, uh and then something occurred and then, you know, he fucking shot Slacks and kid.
Yeah, someone called me to tell me about that. It's crazy.
Yeah, it was wild. The, last night at the hospital was a fucking shit show, but for very different reasons. Uh the live talking of the news from Dundee was pretty good. I won't lie, that was a, it was a good addition.
Alright, Cantor, you have a thing you'd like to present?
Uh yes, uh so we just went uh over one of them and the other one uh is I just made a little report about uh, about weed.
Yay, I wanna.
Yeah. Uh my recommendation on the medical side of things would let it be schedule three. Um however, uh the intention behind this is that it's a wider discussion that encompasses everything, including the PD. So uh I am open to discussions on that. Um, uh it seems like there's been real trouble sourcing ra- um papers to wrap them in, uh so I just took a tobacco out of cigarettes uh and tested that one. But it seems like uh people are mostly selling it right now, from my understanding. So uh I'd definitely be interested in Dakota's feedback on that.
How are they smoking it?
Uh reset your MDT and you should be good.
Well, I, I just fucking, that's what I did. I took it, uh took the tobacco out of a cigarette and just used that. I rewrapped it.
That's what I used to do in high school.
For the record, I am not possessing any of it, but I did smoke it for scientific purposes.
Possession by ingestion isn't a concept here.
Exactly, exactly.
Thank goodness.
Uh yeah, if you wanna, Cantor, if you wanna meet like this week about it, I'd be happy to talk about it.
Ooh, I can create an event. Um but uh for right now, um since our current uh, uh do, do you have? I guess since, you know, we have limited time on this with this being our last actual council meeting. Uh do you have any thoughts on whether or not it should be scheduled three or upgraded based on your experience?
Uh I mean, it's the only drug narcotic that we're finding right now.
Mm hmm.
Um. I would say, is it, is it three right now or is it two?
Well, currently we haven't enacted the scheduling. We decided to hold off until we felt comfortable scheduling marijuana. Uh and then it would be announced, because there's no point in announcing the schedule with nothing on it.
There's nothing scheduled yet.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So uh this was my report on where I believe the marijuana should land.
Well, this hell yeah affects her positive.
Alright, Molten, uh reset your tablet and tell me if everything's normal.
I mean, I, I, this all looks good. I would uh, I think if I, if we just want to like sit, sit and talk about it as far as like what the scheduling would look like in the future if other things were to come into effect and what would affect the the level that the drug would be on, I'd have a little bit better.
Well, that's kind of what this is, right? It's just a discussion. That's what decides it, is um, is I bring forth the scientific testing and the PD brings forth of the issues that the drug has caused for them. Um we kind of weigh the both public risk and uh individual risk uh and land on where it should be, is my thoughts.
Okay.
Uh we could wait, but also, you know, we might not be here by the next one, so uh if you, if you have anything now, it'd be appreciated.
I mean, we, like I said, this is the only drug we're catching people with and people sell it a lot, so uh if I was going to go by what I've seen on my end, I'd want it uh scheduled two.
Okay. Uh anyone else have any thoughts on their experiences with it or anything to throw in there?
Isn't the scheduling supposed to uh, isn't scheduling supposed to be like a thing where you're like, hey, this drug is kind of bad? Hey, this drug is bad and then hey, this drug is super bad, right?
Pretty much, yeah. Um the way that we've been planning to do it is to weigh, like I mentioned, the both public health risk and individual health risk. So my scientific um testing here and all this, this report gives a little bit of both. Um but some of the actual public health risk is from what the PD have experienced, right?
Uh I, uh, I, I just want to be clear, um, cause I know we talked about this. because I know we talked about this last time, uh make sure we're still on the same page. So uh these are recommendations from PD and from the hospital and from all your analysis of, you know, how uh.
Actually.
How the law should be.
bookmarks before, so maybe I'll have to get bookmarks added to clerks.
I'm just I'm I'm just putting it on record that I'm reserving the big red veto button because uh you know, no offense to anyone who may sit in Maltin's chair in the future, but uh there are plenty of lawyers that are popular enough to get elected who could just decide that all drugs should be Schedule Three.
They're right.
And that would prevent a and that would allow like a for, you know what I'm saying? That would make it for.
Okay.
Uh you know, non-governmental types. And yeah.
Okay, that's understandable.
That presents a concern for me if, you know, the council is unilaterally allowed to schedule drugs. I think that causes some problems.
Okay, um I've laid it on that because it seemed like that was uh how you want it to be, um but.
I I don't know. I don't know. Maybe I I don't know.
Okay, uh.
Maybe I need to stop thinking so conservatively. I'm not sure.
That's all right.
What do you think, Max? Might be a stick in the mud?
We'll shoot it.
Um. A little bit, but that's okay. Um.
Your opinion is still valid. It's all right.
Well, I it I think Schedule Three is the perfect place for weed. I'll say that right now.
Oh, I agree. I agree with marijuana. Yeah, totally.
And and I I will say that I'm I'm confident in Alan Crane to make the best decision ultimately, no matter what happens.
Yes, I I have no issue with you reserving the rights of veto. Um I completely understand that at the end of the day, this is more your field house. Uh that's also why I haven't established times and funds for them. Uh that uh I will leave under your purview and what you believe is necessary for your schedule.
Okay, uh yeah, no, I think I think marijuana is fine. Yeah, I just uh you know me, I'm worried about the future.
No, I completely understand. Yeah, um.
Again, I can foresee a world where there's a faction where the head of the bar, you know, is aligned with the mayor, mayor's line of the deputy. Uh and that creates uh a winning vote in any circumstance. So I'm trying to think through pitfalls there.
If uh if you even feel it necessary to um to adjust the law at any point to state that this has the uh option to be overruled by the DOJ at any time or the Chief Justice at any time. Uh I have no issue with that. I completely understand. Uh this should be under you at the end of the day.
I uh I don't know how I feel about that. It serves me and I like the idea, um but I don't know that it's what I want objectively, so.
Okay.
Uh I will resign myself to being hopeful, I suppose.
Okay, yeah, um you know, if there are issues down the line, we will adjust based on them. Um but yeah, uh it seems like most people are. We have a one for Schedule Two. Um it seems like everyone else is pretty on board with Schedule Three. Any anyone else on Dakota's side for that?
Well, I just wanted to clarify. The only reason I would want it two right now is because of its veracity and the fact that it's the only thing we've recovered to this point.
No, absolutely. And and that information should be valid. I don't want this to be only based on testing. Uh I think it is uh for more well-rounded to look at the big picture. So um I thank you for your feedback. I just wanna see what everyone else thinks.
Yep, absolutely.
Okay. Seems like we're landing on Schedule Three.
Yeah.
All right, um but uh like I said, Crane, I will leave the times and fines up to your discretion on that completely. Um.
Well, uh, okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
Fuck yeah.
Uh sorry, I had a moment there. Uh what time did you set the debate for?
Uh and three hours from now?
Oh, 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 okay, cool, cool, cool.
Yeah, I gave us time. I gave us time. So we're not rushing from the council meeting straight to that.
Sounds good. All right, so I'll take a look at the uh scheduling stuff and come up with some times and fines and that's approved, it sounds like. Was anybody against it?
Nope.
Okay, all right. So we can push that with one drug scheduled. Yay, success.
Didn't you have uh one more thing, Cantor, or was that it?
Uh that was it. I I had the uh EMS ambulances. I had the FAFO law and then this, that, that's all I got for now.
Uh and Happy is still ahead of EMS, right?
Uh yes, he is.
Okay, I'll I'll try to talk to him about the engine shit.
Sure, I'm sure he'd appreciate that. Yeah.
Figure out where they're at on that.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Alan, uh do you have anything you'd like to present to the council?
Uh.
You wait, yeah, maybe uh maybe you wanna say some words at the uh the final council meeting? Uh being that it's uh your brainchild with uh the other Leela, I think her name was Lila?
Oh yeah, that's right. Yeah, um. Uh no, um I don't really have any words. I mean you know me, I'm a simple man. I I genuinely uh um I appreciate each and every one of you. I mean there's, you know, there's something to be said about uh you know, being the old man uh sitting in a building alone. So here's to not being alone.
Amen.
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 No, I don't think uh I don't think there'll ever be a more interesting council of eight than this. This was a hell of a good one to start and you know, we gotta give credit there. I think we did fucking great. Even if it wasn't always easy.
Uh speaking of doing great, uh Ed is absent, so we'll skip her. Um Michael Simone. Do you have anything you'd like to present to the council?
Uh I got like two things. Impersonation of a security firm personnel. I've been asked to bring that forward.
We don't even have impersonation of a doctor, Jesus.
Uh apparently more and more people are dressing up as.
Ain't practicing medicine without a license though, right?
We do, but they have to actually practice it, yeah.
Right, right, right.
Not that I need it. It's just uh it's just funny to give a comparison. Uh yeah, what are are people pretending to be security firm?
Yeah, people are pretending to be G six employees. I don't know for what purpose, just approach.
I heard that they were robbing people dressed as G six employees.
Oh, that would make sense. Yeah, I was wondering what the motivation is. Okay.
I believe we also have impersonating of a government employee, Cantor.
Uh I think it's only a peace officer, isn't it?
It's pretty much a government employee.
Yes, government employee. Are they?
Oh, that's changed. Oh, perfect. It's easy.
No, it's changed. I know big time.
Is this as G six employees? I I if if I I just I don't see the point of the law if they're like if people are just getting robbed on the street by group quote unquote group six employees, but if if people are dressing up as security firm people to gain access to businesses or rob them, I I think that.
That is happening.
Is that happening? Okay.
That's crazy.
Yep.
All right, then.
Yeah, I have no issue with it. Uh I do not run group six. I do not know how big of an issue it would be, but uh I don't want people getting robbed. So yeah, see it.
I wanna say at least six different people came up to me throughout the course of the last seven days to bring this up as an issue. Six different unrelated people to each other, so it does seem to be rather pervasive.
Yeah. And as of today, I did put that in there, right? It's pretty easy to see for most people if it's a criminal dressing up. If they have a felony, maybe they can't work G six in the first place, which isn't easy.
So my only thoughts is that this puts the fine uh more than impersonation of a government employee and the time about the same. Do we think that this is even more harmful than someone pretending to be an officer?
Isn't it the same?
No, it's slightly higher, fine wise, yeah. Just slightly.
Yeah, but that's because that's because the base fine for impersonation is lower because of I think I think the basis is a thousand as well.
How about this? Uh Alan has said that he plans on doing a penal review. Uh let's just leave the fine and time blank and vote instead on this being a crime and what sort of crime? And then when when Alan when Alan goes through and rebalances everything and sorts everything out, then he can toss in an appropriate time and fine.
Yeah, I just wanted to be live with everything else, so.
Farm of mist.
Yeah, I feel like I feel like the time and fine was probably a thousand, but something might have changed it. I don't know. That's.
It was a thousand.
Yeah, so Crane would know better than me. I'm fine with which which with whichever, since there are felonies, I thought it was in line with the rest. And that that's what the entire point of it basically.
That's reasonable. Yeah, I'd roll for this.
I'm in favor of this because uh there are a lot of people who take uh a lot of pride in working at group six and they they.
Whoa dude, it's so fucking creepy.
And they are, they are.
It's so creepy.
Citizens, which um if any of you are familiar with the history of Los Santos is a very rare thing for people to be for a very long time.
Honestly, yes.
Unless they are a judge, for example, or uh so I think this has the dual effect of, you know, potentially protecting people, but also uh rewarding people who have invested their time and effort into uh transporting money legally. So I I am in favor of this for those people.
Any knives?
Sick.
There you go.
Ooh.
Uh the other thing, and this is just me throwing it out there, is a way to, we talked about this before, since it's it's there is people living in the sewers. People that we do care about and we want them to be able to, I guess, still live in their homes. Uh this is a sewer pass in a way that makes it so not everyone can just run up and claim that they live in the sewers or that they need access to the sewers. Um they do have something called sewer coins.
Yeah, what are those? I've never heard of these.
It is a currency that they use in the sewers, basically. Uh as for the the what else you can use these coins for, I don't have any clue. But I felt like it was a way for us to only have the people that actually do live in the sewers to buy said sewer pass. Because right now someone could run up and be like, hey, I need a sewer pass. And then people are like, do you live in the sewers? And it's like, yep. Uh the people that live in the sewers was also saying that they could vouch for people, but I don't think we should leave that in their hands either. It's just something to throw it out there to give them a chance to actually live in their homes without getting a felony every time they come in and out. But at the end of the yeah, it's it's all written there.
Yeah, I'm not against it. I have been very open about the fact that um I went down there with the PD in the first expedition down there to do testing on the place. Uh and there's genuinely radioactive material down there and it's it's fucked. Um for for personal and public health, I would strongly recommend no one go down there uh unless they are, you know, in full security like equipment, uh you know, has been certain things. Uh but no, I I understand some people, you know, might want to take that personal risk, so I'm not fully against it.
Well, some people don't have houses, unfortunately, nor apartments, and they live in the sewers, like, I guess.
Yeah, like I say, I'm not fully against it. I get it.
What's like the uh sewer population now? Do do you know, Michael?
I was supposed to have a meeting with them just to to see uh and hear them out, but unfortunately we kept kept missing each other. So I wanted to push it, push it like to the next time, but there might not be a next time. And that's why it's a bit up in the air. If we if we feel like it's a good thing, we can go for it. If not, I'll leave it at that. And then someone else can come up with something.
I I like the idea. I just uh I'm in enforcement, kind of like you said. I mean, I I don't know if we should have like a I I don't think a vouch system is good, like you said, but uh like how how are we verifying these are people like actually living in the sewers or?
Well, that was what the sewer coins were for is that it would be people who are generally down there for enough time to come across these, which would only be the people who generally live there.
It does also cover that the police can search individuals on and out. Yeah, that's uh it it covers a lot of things that I think um like why would someone who doesn't live down there even want to go down there other than for various purposes? So it covers a lot of that for me. Uh.
They what? Use these pennies and what? They go to City Hall to get the pass?
Basically, yeah.
So they're turning them in for the for the pass itself?
Correct.
So are you expecting my staff to handle shit-covered coins, Michael?
Oh my God, that's crazy when you put it like that.
What if they're radioactive?
Yeah, those radioactive barrels material in the air is.
You can make like a a box where they just kind of put that coin in so you don't have to actually handle it.
Hmm.
But it was the it was the best way that I could come up with a solution that didn't just give everyone free pass to claim that they live there. I also have a feeling that there's less reason for people to go into sewers, but I do not know.
I mean, I'm fine with it just for trying a uh a a solution or some kind of regulation, you know, it could always be changed or appealed by future councils.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm not against it. Uh what do we do with the sewer panties we get? Do we try to like, we can make money off those? Is this or is it just kind of, we have them now?
No, we just have them. So in theory, we can toss them more, put them, put them somewhere else.
They might become valuable. So you know, maybe this isn't a terrible idea.
I mean, in theory, uh this would be like a down the down the line thing, but uh you know, if we ever needed uh, you know, the government ever needed the the services of the sewer people, that would that could be a way to pay them if they uh they don't use standard currency as well.
The next Sanguine we have for sewer people fight with, just give them the pennies back or something. You know, there's a lot of uh there's a lot of potential here, honestly.
Yeah, it could be good to have a reserve of uh sewer coins for a rainy day. Never, never know.
Yeah, I I see.
They do also clean, they do also clean up the sewers and whatnot, so which is a good thing for us.
Okay, hell yeah. We've actually talked about that being a concern as well. Um it might be a better issue than risking Carmine and Bobby bringing all their uh fucking prisoners down there.
I mean, if they're keeping it clean, that's a it's kind of like a two birds, one stone type of deal.
Yeah, I could agree with that.
I'm all for it.
They're paying us to clean up down there, fine with me.
All right, well, I guess in people in favor of giving it a try and then people can change it or the next people uh or the next council can change it if they feel like it's a waste or if it's not usable at all. So I feel just one penny should do. And are we able to do so just lasting a month, Crane?
Hmm.
That possible?
I mean things are possible, yeah.
What is the easiest for you in in terms of this? How do we, the easiest way to manage this?
Hmm. May I?
Mark it down. The MDT profile puts sewer pass issued expires in thirty days from that date, right? It's not gonna be that different from a hunting license, clerks, yeah.
Clerks, I guess, to be honest, man.
Guarantee you nobody will buy this unless it's a physical pass.
Physical passes are probably not gonna be a thing.
No, but you can just have the cops check your profile, just like if they stop you, they could just.
Yeah.
I feel like the people who live down there would would buy it.
They would buy it because they.
They care enough about going down there.
They they're the people that care the most about this being a thing. Hence why I'm trying to make, yes. This isn't for Billy Joe wanting to go and exploring in the sewers. It's for the people that live there to make their lives easier. So but uh one coin and then they noted down on the MDT, that's fine with me.
You know, if the pennies are radioactive, we could donate them to the hospital since radioactive copper is used in radiation therapy.
Oh, hell yeah. I'm so down. Yeah.
Need them to use the radioactive for pension therapy, yeah.
I'm I'm in. I love this. I still have a rat I got in the sewers. Uh I think he's a little radioactive. Uh he's like three times the size he's meant to be. Uh but he's he's pretty cute. I named him Jeffrey.
I I guess.
I'm uh I'm honestly ambivalent. Same thoughts as I had about the whole hospital situation. Uh I don't really know if it'll deter anyone. I don't know if people are getting caught anyway. I don't actually, I don't know if anyone's ever been caught going in or out of the sewers. So I would say uh whatever you guys think.
I guess if they're paying for something that they don't even actually have to worry about, that's not bad for us. It's just a security net for them, so I mean.
This is more reassurance.
Yeah, it's just good for them.
It's also it's also a way to get a a census, shall we say, of of the people living down there and and that that could be good information to have on hand.
Honestly, yeah, um yeah. I think it's positive enough.
Yeah, it's more of a reass- reassurance.
Why can't it be a physical pass?
They're worried because again, they live in the sewers. They don't have a lot of money, so them getting fined is a lot for them. As for people going in and out of the sewers, I do know people questioned it, but I have a hunch that it's not going to be such a big deal. So.
All right, I'm, uh, open to whatever.
All right.
Okay.
And there's.
Not high, said the fox.
Yeah, not here. It's all good.
All right, there we go. Uh, I think that's all I had.
All right, uh, I had two things. One. Hold on, I lost it. Uh, from the Apple panel that we did, Counter Crane, uh, I did go through the, pretty much the entire city from Toledo down here, uh, down to LSIA, uh, to try to identify every single government building, both active and defunct.
So I had a question about this real quick. From my understanding, uh, Crane, you're gonna be the best one if you want to clarify this. Stay owned. Oh, you're crossing it out already. I was gonna say, stay owned, government owner separate. Yeah, that was my understanding. So this actually is perfect to go alongside my law that I just passed as well, because it clarifies where exactly, uh, they could be charged with that law. Um, so it can go alongside that and I, I'd love it. I think this is great. There you go. There's my whole thing. That covered my one concern. Other than that, I'm good.
Yeah, yeah. So I gone through, and I, I know we had talked about just having this exhaustive list published for people in the future for that, uh, constructive possession of a government building for felony trespassing. Um, if you think I missed anything, please review it, but I, I think it's ready for publishing.
Uh, did we decide what we're doing with defunct buildings?
Uh, I'm personally on board for they should count. You never know when we might make use of them.
As long as it's published in legislation, it is what it is.
It's published as an active or defunct, but it's still published as a government building, right? So I, I didn't clarify which ones were defunct or which ones active because I figured let the judiciary deal with that.
Yeah, that's weird.
All right. Well, I'll prove that then.
Awesome.
You never know when someone's gonna blow up our hospital. We gotta move back to pillbox, so we might as well.
Hey, don't you mean weasel, Max? What? He said fox earlier. Isn't, aren't you, uh, you're first owner weasel?
You, you got a first sona?
Uh.
And it's a weasel?
It's a panda.
When I was talking to you, and my work came up on your phone about your first sona results were in.
Oh, yeah. No, yeah. That's, uh, they're mustelid, mustelid. Oh, what the hell is that?
Mustelid.
It's a type of animal.
Your first sona's a mustelid?
Yeah.
How do you spell that?
Yep. Mustelid, which I think a weasel is a mustelid. Or, or is it like otter? Otters or some shit?
Spiders, otters.
Otters are cool.
Oh, okay. Otters are cool. I like them.
Yeah, they float on their back and they hold hands. That's not bad at all. And they eat their young. Wait, really?
That's pretty badass.
Most animal species commit and found a side.
It's actually ridiculously common.
I mean, it's probably a lot of protein, I guess.
Yeah.
You think, uh, you think animals have prions?
Yeah, what do you mean? Yes.
Cool.
It's how mad, mad cow disease.
That's tight. Wait, so mad cow disease was a cow eating another cow and then getting sick?
Yeah.
That's crazy.
Yeah.
What the flip?
They're feeding cows, cows over in fucking Europe.
The circle of life is fucked up.
Yeah, I heard they eat horses in Europe too.
Uh.
Fucking maybe, who knows?
Mostly, mostly the Swedish people.
That's brutal. You know what says on my phone here? Says that male otters sometimes hold other children of other otters, uh, ransom. So they like extort the mother for food.
Yep.
Like, give me some of your food or the kid gets it.
Well, watch, watch a nature documentary on the cuckoo bird. That thing is fucked up. It, uh, lays in the nest of another bird, it rolls the eggs out, and then the parents don't even realize that they're feeding and raising another bird until it's old enough to leave and do the same thing. It's crazy.
Yep.
Real quick, uh, you're missing the current hospital, I believe, unless you.
Oh, God.
Uh, so I'm gonna write that real quick.
PD, I think, too.
Uh, I think that, that's LMPD, is it?
No, that would be, no, L, LMPD, what was my old police department?
Oh, it says Vine Woodham Elgin. Oh, yeah, that's way up there, yeah.
There's a lot of fucking places. Let me just tell you, there's a lot of government buildings in the fucking island. Holy shit.
There are.
Oh yeah, you missed the power station too.
Uh, I figured power station didn't even be included because it's specifically mentioned within the chart.
Might as well if we got a full list, I suppose, yeah.
All right, that's true.
I think it has all the other medical centers. So there's like a, uh, there's like a tiny medical clinic in Toledo. It's, I don't think it's ever really been used. I don't, do we want to consider that?
I, I've been up there recently. I don't know if it got bought out, but I.
Oh, is it? Maybe.
I didn't see it.
I, well, I, I think it's a veterinarian clinic now.
Oh, okay. Easy. Well, then fuck it. That can be, that can be private now. That's fine.
Uh, there's also a PD on, or a defunct PD on, uh, Popular Street.
The old trooper PD?
Yes.
Uh.
Good riddance.
Good catch, though.
There's also a hospital in Eclipse Boulevard.
Is there?
Yeah.
On Eclipse? Where's that at? Hold on. Oh, wait, is that? Okay, I know what you're talking about. Yes, there is. That's the one Kitty tried to open up way back in the day. Um, is it currently a hospital or was she just trying to take over the building? I actually don't remember.
No, I believe it does say that it's a hospital.
Okay. Okay, we can add that. I don't, I don't know what it's called. We can figure that out.
I have somebody wants to throw that there.
It's a hospital but on Dorset Drive as well. I don't know if you have that one.
They got some Mount Zona?
Yeah, that's Mount Zona.
Yeah, that's on.
I just put hospital on Eclipse Boulevard for now. Let me see if I can figure out. Oh, we could try to get more details on it. It's like on West Eclipse. Yeah, we're, or I'll say it.
Hmm.
I do not know. Oh, I think it's, I think it's Beta Life. I'm not a hundred percent sure of that name. I'll just leave it as hospital for now.
There we go.
There's also the hospital by the old fire station that's technically separate to the fire station, but I think we could cover it with the grounds.
Yeah, I think that's in conjunction with the Eastorn Way Old City Hall TV.
Yeah.
Cause it's all connected by the, uh, there's like a bridge that goes over east or anything.
Oh my God, not another sky bridge.
Oh, really?
Skybridge is forever. Yeah, that was what that was for, yeah.
Yeah.
It's funny as fuck. But yeah, no, as long as we're all in agreement, that applies. It's perfect.
We had one sky bridge, Connor, but how about a second sky bridge?
Yes, I love those. Big fan of sky bridges.
All right.
Uh, there's also, uh, the Davis Police Station right outside here on Innocence.
Oh, yes, Davis PD.
And then I don't know if we're qualifying as well, but also the Ranger Station off of Baytree Canyon Road.
Oh, we probably should, yeah. Probably should qualify that in case it ever gets used.
Yo, when is voting open?
I believe it is now.
I, uh, noted that I would be tied up in the meeting, uh, so I made an announcement, uh, that voting, or voting would start after our meeting concluded, because I have to put up the ballots. Word.
Oh, yes.
Um, so are we still going through buildings sad here?
Hmm, I think we got everything now.
Yeah, we got, you know, the list is a living list, all right?
Exactly. Cool. Okay, and, um, the one other thing I had was, uh, someone inspired by my own experience that was brought up to me, uh, by other members of the DOJ about, uh, perhaps legislating. Now, I know judges do have this discretion, but, uh, legislating that discretion to, uh, have a diversion program.
This idea is sick.
For, uh, either like first time felons who had prior a clean record or for individuals to reinstate their driving license following a fracture and the result on its removal, uh, intended for additional to meet discretionary parameters after three days following being proffered by an active sitting judge during adjudication. So this would be for the judge to, right, essentially help decide and figure out amongst the parties what would be sufficient.
Are you talking about a, uh, you're talking about like a DUI, right?
Yeah, like a DUI or, I don't know, somebody who happened to drive a, you know, higher than a hundred and forty-five miles per hour somehow, going ten to twenty car lengths. The thing I told you about.
Right. I, I just, I would just be careful about the wording because the way I read this right now, uh, this sounds like a judge could not, the judge could use their discretion to say, well, you had eighteen points, you committed another speeding ticket, you now have twenty-one, but I'm not taking your license.
Uh, how would you change it?
Is that what you intended?
No, 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 that's not what I intended.
So you're thinking like DUIs or like Rick was driving?
Yes, exactly, exactly.
So instead of felonies, would, would it be better just to say, I, like, traffic felonies, basically, so like a judge can't do this for like violent felonies, it could only be for traffic offenses? Or did you intend for this to include like, uh, an assault with a deadly deferral?
No, this was, this was primarily for just those first time, you know, individuals was my initial intent, but you know what? It's not a bad idea, you know, remove all the barriers to excuse, give people every chance to not fuck up. And then if they continue, well, they were literally provided every opportunity otherwise. I think when you remove barriers to excuse, people show you their true character.
Ain't that the truth?
So you're proposing a, a, any and all felonies then?
Uh, you know, I wasn't initially until you said it, Lance. This, I was thinking more with myself in mind or with the DUI perspective, like you said, because this was sparked by, uh, uh, Ben Shire I watched the other night, um, where a lad had a DUI. He didn't have any other offenses, but, uh, gosh darn, he, he just went for a, he just got a little drunk. Uh, he was quote unquote drinking with the boys. It was on the record that the boys was, um, himself in three different mirrors, uh, which is very sad. Uh, you know, I'm, I'm all about getting people sobriety. Uh, he hit, he hit Michael and I, we were parked by MRP, like this road down from MRP on, um, was it Adam's Apple, Michael? Yeah. And he just like swarved into us from across the other lane of traffic, came back and swerved into us again. We went to go be like, dude, what are you doing? Pulled up next to him, motherfucker is drinking in the driver's seat at the red light. Makes a U-turn and hits us again.
So.
I called, I obviously, I, I called, called the cops and they're like, we're already in a pursuit, so, uh, sucks to suck essentially. Then that guy went and took a crazy jump onto the highway and hit an officer, um, where they then started chasing him and he was arrested for his DUI.
So the, the DUI itself, though, is only a misdemeanor if this is geared towards.
Uh, it was, he also got, he also got, because he was drunk and driving like a maniac, he also got, uh, and then tried to evade police afterwards. He got reckless evading too.
Okay. Didn't he get assaulted or?
Did, uh, did he end up getting so? I don't remember if he got found guilty of that or not because he ended up, uh, the judge ended up being like, hey, Siobhan, you had a diversion program. Why don't we do something like that? For this guy and the PD was willing to accept it. So that's what ended up happening for him. And then it was brought up that perhaps, you know, we should legislate this.
Reckless beating, driving while intoxicated, felony hit and run and resisting arrest.
Hmm. There we go. It was a felony hit and run. That's what it was.
Isn't the difference between hit and run felony hit and run, the, the fact that you don't stop? Oh, it's if someone gets injured.
Yeah.
Hit and run by definition is when you don't stop and identify yourself, hence the run part. Uh, felony hit and run is when it is a more serious situation because the action you fled from led to injury or death.
Oh. Uh, this is something that already happened to her, so she's writing it, so it could be a thing.
Yeah, I, I think Sky was injured from the, um, accident when he hit her.
Rut row.
That's my understanding.
Yeah, there was only like three officers on duty, so I don't blame them for not, you know, hunting him down until he became an issue.
So at the end of all this, basically, the judge is still gonna have discretion on whether or not this person qualifies based on the severity of crime? Okay.
Exactly. 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 So judicial discretion, whether or not this person is gonna be a good fit or a good candidate for the diversion program, right?
Yeah, like if someone recklessly evades and then they end up getting five times attempted second degree murder, someone like that probably wouldn't, even if they had no prior record.
I, it's, it's like I said, I, I mean, I trust our judges to exercise their discretion, um, you know, smartly and with their best, you know, to essentially execute their best judgment in accordance with the law and operating this to, or the individuals.
We've got some great ones.
Yeah, if someone, uh, if someone diverts, somebody killed six people and.
You're gonna have a convo. Yeah, you're gonna have a conversation with them. I'm not worried about that. Um.
So anybody against this shit?
Yeah, anybody against this?
No, not really. If it's judge discretion, I mean, I trust they won't be done with it. So, yeah, easy.
All right, sounds good.
Oh, well, that was all I had. Thanks, everybody. And thanks for helping review the list, because I, I knew I couldn't be completely exhaustive.
I actually got the mime stuff, apparently. Um, so about the mime stuff.
Oh.
Oh, yeah.
Now we're good on that. I mean, I, like, oh, shit, wait, hang on. So here is what I wanted to do, okay? Um, we make mimery a felony.
Nice.
I think that's more palatable.
That is way, I don't, I don't think that's more palatable at all.
Do you think? What, just taking away their rights is better?
Way too much faith in PD. If you think that that charge will ever be used appropriately, you're fucking crazy.
I don't know if it'd be used appropriately, but.
They said, they said the same thing about adoption fraud. Yeah, now you, you overturned it. Yeah, I overturned it because it wasn't fair to the people who want to role play h- house with other people, you know? If that's what they want to do, then I'm gonna let them do that, you know? So that's why I repealed it, but like, no, no adoption fraud went to court.
If, if someone's.
Well, yeah, that's because we, we wrote the, anyway.
If someone's not talking, can you detain them on suspicion of being a mime?
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If I'm standing, and I'm standing down the street and I'm, and I'm flipping off the cops and then making, you know, jerk off motions, miming, you know? You, you doing mimery over there? That's what I'm saying. Eh, I got some problems with that.
That's crazy.
Uh, so we, uh. I liked it better when you were gonna write people's names down and execute them.
Oh my God.
Uh, yeah, okay, fine. We'll keep it, I, I already, I already have it in there, so, uh, we already, we already passed what I wrote in the. That's what I'm saying. I'm just asking how that is going. What are we doing with it? So initially I thought maybe making my memory a felony would be more fair. Oh, nope. Writing their names down and killing them is definitely better. All right, well then we're good on that. Have you, have you picked like a task force that's gonna go around and make people register? Uh, yeah, it's called the LSPD. I was gonna say, what color are their uniforms?
Oh my God.
You gotta be careful with that one.
Christ, dude.
They got, they got, they got a nice ocean blue. Perfect.
Oh, that's good.
All right. Was that it? Yeah, I think that's it. Do you know anything else? Wasn't there, did I, oh, did you guys remove that one?
Which one?
I read something earlier about under and over. Yeah, so my wife and I have been doing this thing where we'll write stuff in there, uh, to like see if it's getting like leaked to the public or whatever. Oh, gotcha.
Yeah, someone told Archie. He's been talking about it a lot.
She found out somehow. He, he called me about it.
Yeah.
Somebody who could see it leaked it, that would be how he found out.
I was.
I was already thinking in my head how this is gonna work if we voted yes on it and then.
Yep.
Stanley Miller had applied while we were voting on it. Uh, I don't have a thing about that now, so good.
Nice.
Thank you.
Yep.
Of course, our pleasure. Help you to assist.
Headache avoided. Well. Peace out.
Good work, everyone.
Oh, my God, he's being a mom. Help.
Yeah, help, he's miming, guys. Please, make him stop.
Alan, I sent you, um, I sent you the debate question.